I would like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees meetings for January 3, 2022 at 6:30. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Something to aspire to.
Yes.
Okay, let's have roll call.
Jan Gaffney, absent. Dan Green?
Here.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Here.
Nancy Moon?
Here.
Marilyn Palmero?
Here.
Ann Rose?
Here.
Chris Shell, absent. Julie Meredith here. I thought you weren't going to be here.
Yeah, I had to look back because I was out of town.
Okay. I will accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
Got it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Call to the public. Hello, public.
I don't think we've met as a board, Friends Board, since the last library board, but the things I could tell you are that the December book sale, we made $3,414. We took in $400 for membership, and we've spent so far on the wish list for the library staff, $807. And our membership meeting will be March 24, hopefully in this room, and we're planning tentatively a spring sale at the end of April in this room, hopefully.
Everything is always contingent.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I think it's been a marvelous job that the Friends have been able to do through this.
You know, I think they have.
Oh, my, yeah. Everyone's pulled together really well, and we're very pleased with the results, and it's benefited the library, so that's great. All right, the consent agenda has four items. I'll accept a motion.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Anyone want to deal with any of the four items? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Library statistics as of the 3rd of January.
A little too quick for us to get the report pulled together, so no statistics tonight, sorry.
So we will move to the library director's report.
Okay, so general update, the library's annual state aid report that goes to the Library of Michigan has a reporting period of October 1, 2021 through February 1, 2022, and covers data from the most recently completed fiscal year. Because we have a January to December fiscal year, the data to be submitted covers 2020. Due to some technical difficulties, I was unable to complete the report in time to be included in the January board packet, so it will be added to the February packet. I just wanted to give you an update since I said I was going to put it on this packet, and I did not. A little bit of technology issue there. Next item, the Institute for Museum and Library Services, IMLS, launched a grant project to assist Michigan Public Libraries to safely deliver services inside libraries, outdoors, and online. The MI-83 TLC Technology Libraries and Communities Grant will distribute technology kits, online programming kits, and outdoor programming kits. Our library has already received a notification that we will receive the following materials: an online programming kit including programming laptop, video camera, microphone, tripod, green screen, webcam, and kit container, and a weather canopy that's 10 by 20 canvas tent structure with open walls.
Wow.
These items are valued at approximately $2,759.03. We anticipate that they will arrive in the next few months, so we are very grateful to that grant award. Last item, the Board of the David W. Elliott Memorial Foundation approved a grant of $5,000 to the Clarkston Independence District Library for the new Meet Your E-Library program. Each month, the library will feature one of our e-services such as Overdrive, Hoopla, Canopy, Tumble Books, et cetera. Patrons can track their usage of these services on the library's Beanstack app. At the end of each month, we will draw a name from the patrons participating in the monthly challenge and award a brand-new iPad. We are grateful for the fun and exciting way this project will connect our community to these great online services, and we are thankful to the David W. Elliott Memorial Foundation.
Good, so is that going to be published on our website?
We have a whole marketing campaign that we are launching as we speak in the next few days. This all happened in December, so we really ramped this up very, very quickly, and we're really excited to be doing this, but it will take place all the way through 2022.
Great, that's terrific.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
Okay, so all we have to do is fix our technology glitches, huh?
Yep, yep.
All right. The next item, now we're into regular business. So the first item every year is the election of officers, so we are now open for nominations for president.
I would like to make a motion that our current 2021 officers continue through 2022.
That makes that much shorter. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that our officers from last year, Marilyn Palmero is president, Dan Green is vice president, Jan Gaffney is treasurer, and Allison McFadden-Keesling as secretary, continue into this year. All these members have acquiesced to that request. So, we will vote on this. All those in favor of maintaining the same Board of Officers, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Nobody was leaping up there for added duties for the year. Okay. All right, number two, our attorney billing rates.
The library has been employing library law specialist Ann Surink at Foster-Swift Collins &amp; Smith PC for library-specific legal services since the library started the re-establishment process in 2011. The hourly rate for legal services was last adjusted in 2020, when there was an increase from $200 per hour to $210 per hour. At this time, the firm proposes increasing the rate to $225 per hour for most work and setting employee-benefit work to $250 per hour. The rate for bound work would be quoted separately, although we don't have any anticipation of doing any bond work, but it did say that in the letter. Beyond 2022, the annual increase would be no more than 5%, which for the following year would make it $230, $625, and $260, $250 respectively, unless otherwise agreed upon by the library and the firm. The firm would like the library board to review and sign the included letter indicating agreement to the new rate. This is still much lower than most, yeah, most attorneys are, yeah, so.
And we have the advantage of having both of these positions really filled by people who are very familiar with how libraries work.
Yes.
Governmental entities.
Even the labor attorney that is there does a lot of library work, because obviously those of us that are using Ann are also using Michael, who is the associate that does the, or is the attorney that does the labor attorney pieces of it, so.
Well, I think during this past year with COVID, you know, they provided information and kept us doing what we should and what we should not be doing.
So much of what I like about what they do is that they tend to do group rates for certain things that all libraries have to do. So for example, when everybody had to have a COVID policy, they figured out what the state required for that COVID policy, they wrote up a COVID policy, and instead of charging all libraries the hourly rate, they divided it out and charged us all a flat fee for that policy. And it's a huge savings to work with them.
Sounds great.
Yeah, they do a really nice job for libraries.
And have done so since we incorporated.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have no complaints.
All right, I will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the attorney new billing rates as defined in the Foster-Swift letter dated December 9, 2021.
Second. Okay, it's been, motion has been made and seconded to approve the new hourly rate for our legal services from Foster-Swift Collins &amp; Smith and sent forward the letter.
Sorry, was Allison our second?
It was me.
Okay, thank you. I do need you to authorize me to sign it.
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried, and Allison will be the signer. Okay.
Yep.
All right, now, on to a review of our 2022.
I think we need to clarify that, who's going to, it wasn't in the motion who's going to sign it.
Do I need to sign it as a secretary, or do you need to sign it as a director?
You want a separate motion?
I think we're going to need a separate motion. In the recommended motion, I recommended that you authorize me to sign it. It's okay if Allison signs it, but I think you need to make it clear in your, in a second motion, who's going to sign the, who's going to sign the letter. Either is fine.
If you can sign it, Julie, you sign it. That'd be great.
Well, you guys need to say who you want to sign it.
Okay, I move that Julie, our director, sign the document.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that our director, Julia Meredith, will sign the letter to Foster &amp; Smith.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion on that.
That's okay. It doesn't matter who, just as long as you designate somebody.
I thought you were supposed to decide, too, so.
All right, well, at least if somebody will know where the signer is.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Sorry about that.
All right, let's look at possible projects for this year.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so what I have done is put together a brief presentation that sort of summarizes the, all the various projects we've been talking about for the last couple of months that had to do with, to the budget process and that. So the first thing, obviously, that we have on our agenda for this year is the millage. We do have a district library, current district library millage of 1.25 mils that was approved in 2014. It's an eight-year millage, so it goes from 2014 to 2021 inclusive, which is this year. The money that was collected from December 2021 through February 2022 is our 2022 budget. So the goal is to put it on the ballot in August. That election will be August 2. What we have been talking to up until this point is a renewal of that eight-year millage. So Headley has rolled that millage down from 1.25 mils down to 1.1687. We have no reason to override that, back up to 1.25. We are doing fine at our 1.1687, so I would recommend going ahead and renewing it at the current roll-down rate. So when we did put this millage on the ballot in 2014, it did pass with 58% yes. So I would anticipate, since we're just asking for renewal, that we should be able to go to the public and let them know that we would like to continue offering library service the way that we are with the seminar funding, but we have the best. If we do an eight-year millage, that would cover 2022 through 2029 inclusive, so then there wouldn't be another vote on the ballot until 2030. And so the next step in this process is to go to the attorney and have them write the ballot language so that we can talk about that. Now, the corridor improvements are each, that tax capture is no longer part of our ballot language, but there is a brownfield. A brownfield is a small tax capture. The one that we have in Independence Township is on one property. It is the property of M15 and Dixie that used to be a toll service station. When they tore that down, we paid to clean that up, and so money is being shaved out with those taxes in order to pay for that cleanup. And that is where that little plaza is now that includes Chris Belli's, and T-Mobile, and.
Jersey Mike's.
And all of that. So obviously, that is an improvement over a closed gas station, but that is the tax capture. And because it is a tax capture, and money from the library's millage would be going toward some of that, that would need to go in there as well. But it's one property, not like the CIA where it was a whole district full of properties. Any questions about that?
No.
So our attorney will compose our language?
Yep, we'll, I'll have the attorney do that, and we will likely do that, depending on how quickly she turns it around, either February or March. We usually have to have it pulled together. I don't have the exact date yet, I'm going to double-check with the county, but usually when you're going on the August ballot, it has to be prepped in May. We have time, whatever it takes. But we'll do it plenty early to make sure, because they are adding a primary and special election onto this year. This year was going to be an August primary, and then the gubernatorial election in November. But with the passing of Andrea Schroeder, there will be a special election. The primary will be in March, and the election to fill that seat will be in May.
Great.
So we want to make sure that we don't get lost in the shuffle and try to get all that stuff turned in and tried to get it anyway. Okay, next item is updating the employee policy manual. This project actually is an in-progress project that we started several months ago. The library budget is the funding source for this. The attorney has already pulled it together, given us a draft. I need to pull this up, maybe together, and we need to sit down, review that, and something wrong with that project. But with everything else that was going on in 2021, all the turnover and staff and whatever, it got sort of set off to the side, but we are ready to carry on with that and continue with this project. Any questions on that one? Okay. Okay, so repairing the library wall and office. This was an unexpected project. It is in progress already. It will be insurance that will pay for this project. The project plan is to repair the exterior and interior wall and replace damaged computer and furniture. The next step is to select a project contractor to make repairs and to meet with library design to select the furniture. These are the pictures of the damage that has been done. So remember that last month's meeting, I did tell you about, we had somebody who drove into that wall, so we do have damage to the exterior brickwork. The interior office, we are able to sell some of the furniture in the office, not everything was damaged. And so what is in the office, what was in the office currently was original to the building, but interestingly, some of that style has come back, and so I think what we can do is just add some additional pieces and maintain some of what's already in there. I'm going to do this for relatively low cost, and the insurance will cover it. Any questions about that project? That one wasn't on my to-do list just here, but it is now. A little chilly in there at the moment. Okay, upgrade to the alarm panel, we talked about this a little bit. So the alarm panel means the system that supports our burglar alarm, our fire alarm, and what will be the monitoring system on our virus suppression system. So you'll remember that one of the things that the board approved was to have the virus suppression system. It's not a board meeting if I don't talk about the virus suppression system.
That's right.
The virus suppression system, a new monitor put on it. That needs to be wired into the alarm panel, and unfortunately, the alarm panel is not able to take on the additional monitoring.
Things have changed since 1992.
Things have changed since 1992. So we want to have the alarm panel redone. It took us a little bit of time to figure out exactly who needed to do that. The original, the original project, we were told that we only needed an electrician, and then when we talked to the alarm company, they were like, no, 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 we need to have the alarm panel redone, and so anyway, it took us a couple tries to figure out who's responsible, National Time Signal is the one that makes sure that it gets tested every year, and Johnson Controls is the company that actually does the alarm panel, so Johnson Controls is the company that we need to work with in order to get the alarm panel switched out. They are meeting with us next week, with Arlene and I, and we will talk to them about that. That is something that we can take out of the capital improvement budget, so that there's no worries there, and we will bring that to you. They would like to also talk to us about updating this fire alarm system. That's a far more expensive project, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that they do want to talk about that. So what is it they want to do with the fire alarm system? Our fire alarm system is original 1992 building, and the alarms are these lights around the wall here. The new systems, they have them come down from the ceiling, they have additional aspects and features that make them more accessible to people who may have various impairments, visual and hearing impairments, that might make it first to know about these emergency signals going off. So they are recommending that we do some of those upgrades at the same time that we're doing the alarm panel. I can assure you that that's going to be a big chunk of money, so we are going to look at it carefully to determine how much of that we really need to do and whether it was a factor to do that, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up, they are interested in talking to us about that.
And it will have to be replaced at some time, anyway.
It will have to be replaced at some point, and I'm not saying that we won't do it at this time, but we are looking at it objectively, and not just saying, sure, let's do this, because I suspect it will be a pretty big chunk of change to do all this change, too. Any questions about that? Okay, backup generator, this is something we've been talking about for several years. This is a very big-ticket item. When we were talking about, going through the budget process, the board pointed out that, yes, this is something we'd really like to take into consideration this year. We know from the township doing this for their own building and for the senior center that this is probably in the range of $75,000 or more, because once we redo this, it would be a whole-building generator, and it would be auto shut, auto on, auto off. One of the advantages of doing this is that it would provide backup power for a number of systems in the building that are crucial. Our fire suppression system, can you talk about that? Can I not talk about that? Is one of the things that that would help sell back in on Memorial Day weekend. The power went out. The compressor that keeps that fire suppression system running with the power, that keeps the air pressure up, because the power was not going to that compressor, the system deflated and armed. When it does that, it's $2,000 to have somebody come out and drain the system and properly the armit, plus you have to have somebody stay in the building because it's not protected at all. So these are the kinds of things that a backup generator would be helpful to ensure don't happen. In addition, it would assure that we would stay up and running for the public, even if snow, weather, whatever, would prevent power from coming to the building, so. The next step in that would be to have an electrical contractor come up and help us determine what exactly needs to be done. I would say we would want to pay the consulting fees to have that done, and then do an RFP after that in order to, and so we're not talking to the electrician who would then be necessarily submitting a proposal. We would have those as two separate processes, just like we did when we did a parking lot. We had a consultant come in and help us figure out what goes in the RFP, and then we did the RFP, and the electrician would then respond to their proposal, their customer proposal.
Especially for something that expensive, yes.
For something that is, absolutely, absolutely. But we'll look at it the whole time.
But if we have more extreme weather events, having a backup generator is beginning to sound more realistic.
We've been very lucky in 2021 that the power's not gone out more than a half. There have been a number of times when the power has gone out of the surrounding area, and we've been able to, when the patrons call, we have power and state gas, you know, and they bring in their phones to charge, they come and work here, or this, we want to be able to provide that service for people.
Yep.
Any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Okay, updating the community meeting room. This was actually a project that was budgeted originally in 2020, and then COVID happened, and so it got sidelined for other more crucial and pressing matters. This would be a capital improvement fund item, but essentially, it was budgeted, and the money then went into the fund balance because we didn't do the project. So we would be using money that had been saved in 2020 for this project. So the project plan would be to replace the carpet, the paint, the tables, the chairs, and the technology in this space, so a complete overhaul of this room. And then the next step to do that would be meeting with library design associates. And Arlene and I will work very closely together with them, and we'll make sure that it meets the needs of the space, as well as still being respectful for the technology. Any questions about that one?
No.
Okay. Okay, so two fun projects that I want to save the fun ones for the last. So one of the things that we will be doing this year is creating Deb's Bookmilk. So this is an in-progress project. The design is currently a draft. It is funded through a memorial in memory of Deborah Lopper. And the next step is to meet with library design associates. Let me show you the draft of what we've got. So, this is our children's department. So to give you some general idea of where we are, this is our little maker's space station. So the circulation desk is over this way. This is the seating area, and these are the doors to the youth activities room. This is the big picture window. This is what we would be looking at as the Bookmilk. So the Bookmilk is essentially going to be two L-shaped sofas with shelving along the back of them. We don't have specifics, but we do have some general ideas. Oops. So some comfy couches like these, and some shelving that would allow for the shelving of board books and display of children's materials, very welcoming when you sit, you would be facing out that beautiful window. It would also create a little bit of a cozy area. That's where our early literacy toys are, so that the parents could have a nice comfy place to sit while their kids play. And Deb was part of the Friends of the Library. She was always very much involved in the book sales. It was not uncommon for a book sale setup for us to walk in here and find her sitting on the floor, arranging the children's picture books, put their shoes on.
That's true.
And when she passed away, her family was very generous in their donation, and so working with her husband, we've decided that this is what we would like to do in remembrance of Deb. Any questions about that?
That'd be a fitting memorial.
I think she would really like it. Okay, the next item is, last item, and this one is my personal favorite, having been a teen librarian. We are updating the teen lounge. This is an in-status, an in-progress project. The drawing is complete, the basic elements have been selected, and just the finishes need to be selected. So the funding for this would be from memorial money and from capital improvement money from the library, so this would be a joint project. The memorials are in memory of Mel Zara and also of Bruce Rose. And the next step is to meet with library design associates. So this is the space that we're talking about, the little room off of the, by the teen computers. So what's in there right now is shelving, and then there's a tall cafe table with some stools, and mostly shelving. And the teens are really drawn to that business center. And so what we are going to try and do is sort of create a space that would be invited to them in the same line. So what you see here are some tables similar to what would be in the business center. Instead of having rolling chairs, we are putting in squishy stools with casters on the bottom that can be rolled around, rolled under the table, you can set your stuff on them, you can put your feet up on them, very versatile. We will also be taking out a little bit of shelving here and putting in an L-shaped sofa, and an ottoman that has a laminate top on it that could be used for a table, or you could put your feet up on it, you could put your laptop on it, whatever, you can lay on this and hang your legs over the end, however it means you can be to sit in this area. And then we will also be putting some display shelving here. So what does this all look like? This looks like, the table would be this sort of rounded table, we have not picked finishes yet, but it would be this sort of peninsula-type table, and an L-shaped couch that is cushy, but still has that support that you can lay on it, you could sit on the floor and put your laptop on the cushion, a lot of flexibility. An ottoman, like I said, with a laminate top, and then these would be the little, the little stools, little head casters that you can push around, and you can sit on them and whatever, and they slide right under the tables so that they are space-savers.
Are we going to have a display board in there like they have in the, in the business center?
We haven't decided to do that yet, but that is a possibility that we could do, and there would be room on this wall to do that. There's a window right here.
Right.
So it's a little bit limiting. The other thing is, these tables would not necessarily be attached to the wall, so these tables could be pushed together if they wanted to do that. So there's a lot of flexibility in the space, coming to room, whatever they feel like using in for, for that particular moment. Any questions about any of that?
A lot of planning in that.
A lot of planning is going on in this one, and my kudos to Elena, she's worked really, really hard to kind of think through what it is that she thinks that. really hard to kind of think through what it is that she thinks that the teens would like, and she has talked to them, and this is, and it's in the direction, so.
Very informative, I think.
Very good. Any comments, any feedback you'd like to give, things to make sure that we remember to do?
No, these are not new to us. We've discussed many of these ideas over time, so this is not a new thought, but if we were able to do the bulk of these things this year, I think we will be accomplishing quite a bit.
I do, too.
We're further along than we felt like when we were last year, like I said, remember that, when we meet with library design associates, we will actually be looking at several projects all at the same time. So the team, the meeting we will be having with them next week, we will be picking the finishes for the teen space, we will be finishing the design for Deb's Book Nook. We may not be picking finishes that day, but we will be finalizing the rig direction, they will be tweaking that. And then we will also be talking about the furniture for the office, all of the, in the community meeting room. So one meeting, we're gonna get through a load of planning. So at your February meeting, you will likely be approving the teen space to go ahead and order that furniture. Possibly, if we can get it together, we'll also be ordering for the book nook as well, approving that project as well. Possibly for the office, the community meeting room is gonna take a little longer, but we are starting that process, so that may not be until further down the road. But I think that this meeting that we have with him in the next week will, I think, push us pretty far into this process. See Elena's project getting done. Fingers crossed. COVID allowing.
So we look forward to hearing about these plans as they come to fruition.
Yes, anything that gets started and then put on hold, and so some of them we are picking up and carrying out, and other ones we are re-implementing, so.
It's gonna be a joy to see that. Busy year. Yeah. Very nice, very excellent. Thank you for the update and overview.
Well, I think all of these things are nice items to add and to talk about when we go for the village. All the updates and changes that we've made to the library and, you know, and how we've used the memorial money that's been donated.
And each of them will result in better service.
Yep.
And better environmental control of our space.
Yeah.
We don't wanna do it and then have it rain on it.
No.
The fire suppression system isn't right.
Yeah, sure. So much of it is balancing maintenance of the building and then also making sure that we're adding those value-added resources and services for the public as well. So you're, you'll see that we're doing this really lovely teen space and children's space and meeting room space at the same time. We're also doing the alarm panel, which I guess we would describe as dull but worthy. It's important, it needs to get done, but it's not interesting, it's not fun, so I try to make sure that when we do these things, we balance both kinds, so that the public feels not only are we maintaining the building, but they're also getting cool stuff that they can enjoy while they're here, not just that behind-the-scenes stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Sounds excellent.
Very good.
All right.
Another little star for, big star for our library.
That's right.
Stupor has been done, it's been such a pleasure to see you. Here's another one.
Lots of, lots of nice improvements.
All right, I thank everyone for coming. It's so nice to see everybody in the new year, and I will now, Dan, accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried, and we will adjourn at 7:05.